Welcome to the Southwest Zone Town Hall meeting. Today we have Scott Slay from Foster, currently from Foster High School, soon going to be in Katy ISD. What's the new high school called?
Jordan High School.
Jordan High School. He's also coached at Tomball. He's also coached previously in Katy and also over in Baytown Sterling. Scott has won, how many state championships now? Seven, eight?
I think seven.
Track. So, and at three different schools. So Scott is also currently the Tisco Water Polo Chair. And today we're going to just kind of focus on high school water polo and Scott's role as the Tisco Water Polo Chair. So we're to get kind of started with the easy questions here. So what is Tisco Water Polo and what is the larger group Tisco?
Tisco Water Polo stems from the Tisco Texas Interclassical Swim Coaches Association, which is basically a giant support group for, you know, UIL swimming and we influence UIL swimming. Coach Mac over the last, Coach Steve McDonald at Lamar over the, has kind of given a big history of Tisco Water Polo recently. It kind of started, I feel like as an accident and they were held, holding meetings at the swim conference, which eventually led to them saying, well, you guys have got to get organized and, and be a part of this. And then I think that's where we're at. I mean, we're definitely part of the organization now. I'm going to say Tisco right now, they, they are very pro UIL water polo. They, they are very supportive. They want to know what we want moving forward. We're important to them. If this is a big step for the future of aquatic sports in Texas. And they, they see us as a bigger voice for, you know, Tisco in the UIL. So we're, this is a very important time for them.
Good. And everybody that has now kind of, kind of joined us. My name is Joe Linnan and we're, and I'm here with Scott Slay and we're having a discussion about high school water polo. And we're going to be talking about the UIL fall of 2021 season here in a, in a few minutes. If you have any questions, please feel free to unmute yourself and ask away or just ask in the chat and I'll ask for you. So now we just talked about a kind of, kind of Tisco Water Polo. Who's on the Tisco Water Polo Board and kind of how are they elected or selected or what have you?
Well, they get elected and some of it, it used to be kind of like, I think we are more mature about it now. It used to be like, oh, let's, that guy's not here. Let's elect him to the board. That's not the case anymore. Troy Goddard is, I'm going to go through the names now, but Troy Goddard is the North Region Rep. So we have five regions and Troy, actually I'm sorry, four. Troy is the North Region Rep. Aubrey Estes is the South Region, which is half of Houston. Then we've got Jeff Chandler, who's on board here tonight. He is the East Side of Houston Rep. And then we have Ally Hill, who is the Hill Country, Austin, San Antonio area rep.
And then yourself makes up the fifth member of the board as well.
Yes.
And, and essentially like the Tisco Water Polo Board kind of acts and makes decisions for the high school coaches, kind of between the annual meeting that happens every September.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we, right now it's a kind of interesting time because we're able to think of a lot and, and I've talked to Tisco quite a bit. They don't know if that meeting is going to happen this September. So I'm in a wait and see mode. That, that meeting might be virtual for all we know.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Again, we're all in wait and see mode right now. So, so now let's just kind of review kind of a little bit. How, how did the decision come up to cancel this, yeah, the spring 2020s kind of, kind of season? So.
Well, we, we were watching the UIL and we were watching UIL sports and we, we had a bunch of contingency plans that we were putting in place from, and it was really truly like, I, I, I think this, this Tisco Water Polo Board at this point in time is really working well. I think this, I think this whole thing has made everybody realize we all need to actually work together to make stuff happen. So we were on calls a lot. That reminds me, I need to set up another call for our Tisco Board this week. But we, we were on calls a lot to, to make decisions and do what was best for the athletes. And once the UIL canceled, then we really, we, we waited till the end and we wanted to be on the same page with the UIL. And really the UIL, they were very appreciative of us, you know, just even mentioning that we want to just be part of, you know, canceling and following their lead.
Good, good. I mean, yes, that was unfortunate that it got canceled, but there is still plans to have the spring 2021 season for, like the last season of high school club water polo, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there, is there?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. I mean, the plans are in place for the spring of 2021. We're, we're excited about it. It's going to be kind of the last hurrah of Tisco Water Polo. We, we want it to be a, you know, just a kind of a, just great end of a run as far as that goes. And then, you know, we're still going to be very much involved with Tisco going forward. And using them as our, our kind of a sounding board towards the UIL. But, you know, it's, Tisco's held this, this organization together for us for a long time. And I want, I want to end this on a good note.
Of course, of course, of course. And that's also like, kind of next spring is a great opportunity for teams that are looking to play in fall of 2021 to possibly kind of get that first step in and have like a little bit of a dry run prior to the fall 2021 season, correct?
I'm, I'm constantly, well, not constantly, but I'm talking to people a lot about, you know, joining. I'm working with my own new school district to try to get them to join and it's, it's difficult because a lot of them are, well, we're going to wait till it goes UIL. And I'm like, for some people, I'm like, well, we're already a solid 40 years behind everyone else right now. And we're going to have to play catch up. But the more that start next spring, the better it's going to be for them. Just kind of rip the Band-Aid off and get going. For the rest of us, we'll, we'll start when the UIL starts. But, you know, the, the more that start now, the, the better.
So, and then another big event that, that happened this past school year was October and yeah, of 2019, the UIL sanctioned water polo as their first sport that they've really added to their kind of, kind of repertoire since wrestling in the late 1990s. So kind of congrats on that. How long was that process?
That process, I say that has been going on since the late 90s. There's been a lot of Tisco history recently that has been going on and it started with our, the Steve McDonald, Tom Landgraf, getting, you know, starting to work with Tisco. They fell a little bit short. And then we kind of just took a break from it. And then, once we made this move, moving water polo from the fall to the spring, we started seeing momentum going. And then they were, Tisco was approached, Tisco Water Polo was approached again to, to try to get things put together to get this UIL status. And we, honestly, the, that weekend was one of the most nerve wracking weekends of my life at the UIL meetings. I, I absolutely froze in front of the UIL. When your boss, the superintendent of your school district is running the meeting, it, it's a little freaky. You, you will, you, you freeze up and I, and I learned that the hard way. But they must have felt sorry for me or something and they were able to push it through.
No, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's been a long process and you mentioned the kind of move to the spring. I remember that move back in 2007 and started with the 2008, 2009, or the 2008, 2009 school year. Kind of just kind of, what was the reason for moving the Tisco Water Polo season to the spring and what was the result?
It was, now that it's all happened, I can truly say I was more of a fan of the fall season. For everything that I do in the sport, it just seems to be a better natural fit. I, I find that in the springtime, I'm, I'm kind of running on fumes. But we did it to get the ball rolling on getting teams that just, they, they did not want to interfere with their high school swim season. And once the UIL bumped the state swim meetup into mid-February, for you guys that are old like me, we used to, I mean, we used to swim up until almost spring break. So, once they bumped that up, we had the ability to kind of push our season and encourage teams to play in the spring, give them something to do after their high school swim season. Because I'm sure everybody that's on this call knows that swimming and meets are starting earlier and earlier and earlier. And so that, that kind of just alleviated that, that pressure for those coaches.
And I think there were only about, about what, about, about 40, 45 teams playing kind of back at the time. And now after kind of moving to the spring, there were what, about 150 to 160 teams playing this spring?
Rough, rough estimate is about 150 teams are playing right now.
So the growth happened.
And that's in some form or fashion. Okay. It's a, there's some teams that take this very seriously. I, if, usually if I'm involved with the team, we're going to take it pretty seriously. If, and then there's some teams that, that, that's their, that's their offseason training in the springtime right now. I think the UIL is going to change the game for us. I think teams are going to want to take it, you know, just, I, I think it's going to become a pretty serious sport.
Yeah. And it's, and it's going to take some time, especially with everything that's happening now. It's going to take probably a little bit more time with teams just kind of adjusting as they go forward. But, I mean, there was some, I mean, I remember Steve McDonald and I were on a podcast about a month ago and we were even talking about the civil war that happened back in the day with, like, there was a couple of state championships each year. There was the fall season. Yeah. There was a spring season. And looking back now, I think that was a necessary evil to go through. Yeah. To get to where, yeah, to where we're at now.
Yeah. It was, it was tough. I always seemed to get put into this Tisco Water Polo Chair position at the most inopportune times. I didn't want it this time. I didn't want it last time. And so I got to be the person that moved it from the fall to the spring and a guy that I would almost consider my father pretty much disowned me. So yeah, it was, it was rough. There's, I, I know some people hated our guts for doing it, but long-term it, it worked out well for everyone. It was interesting. The first year it happened, I actually, my teams did participate in the fall and the spring, both of them. I'm not sure if I could get away with that now. But then after that, it, it just slowly, people started seeing that it was what was best and that it was growing. And it ended in that we ended up moving everybody to the spring.
Yeah. And I think it just allowed, like, it just kept growing and growing. And as you kind of mentioned kind of earlier, there's teams that take it very seriously. There's teams that only play for a couple of weeks. There's school districts that only play within themselves, but it just keeps growing. And was it, and I'm just kind of looking for.
I gotta move my spot. I can't see anything.
That's okay. And there's, and there's going to be plenty of teams that are going to keep, that are going to keep adding prior to the fall of 2021 as well. And it was a very patient process. I mean, the biggest step that I remember in that process was getting Tisco's approval. And their kind of vote of confidence from the swim coaches to say yes, yes, to water polo. That was a, that was a big.
That was another one of those meetings where you're, you're not sure what's going to happen because if it goes badly, you're, you're pretty much done. And then you're going to go start your own organization at that point. Luckily, that wasn't the case. It worked out well. And I wasn't really, I wasn't in, I might've been a region rep at that time, but luckily it all worked out.
No, it was great. And, and, and a big shout out to everyone that took part because it, yeah, it, it takes a village. There's a ton of people out there and Scott mentioned of like a few people, but a lot of hard work over the last 20 years to make this possible. And now again, if people have any questions, please ask in the chat or feel free to unmute yourself and ask away. But now we're going to talk a little bit about the upcoming fall 2021 season. So why the fall season?
Well, quite frankly, I mean, a lot of people have asked that question and it's, we don't have, we don't get to make that choice. The UIL says, this is what's going to happen. If you want your season, it's not going to happen in the springtime. Then if that's what they say, then you, you got to jump at it. And, and that's what we did. They, I remember meeting with them in September. I met with them in a, at the Tisco Conference and they said, we're, we don't foresee this happening in the springtime. We have too many championships. We can't possibly fit it in. And there's like, here's your window right here, right where football and volleyball start is a good place to put water polo. And it's either, you know, you say no, yes or no. And if you say no, well, then you're not going to have your sport as a UIL sport. So it's made it really simple.
And I, and I agree with what you said earlier, as a, like a club coach or what have you, I love it in the fall. I prefer it in the fall. The only reason that it got moved to the spring was just to grow the sport. And I, I think it's like the move back to the fall is going to be a great preseason for swimming. It's going to be a great little precursor to get the people back to the pool a little earlier. And it's going to give the swim coaches a little bit of a break in that springtime. So.
It's, it's just going to take planning. I, I think everybody, when they first hear it and they're, and I'm, I'm telling you now, I love both sports. I love coaching swimming. I love coaching water polo. I love coaching it all. And it's just, you're going to have to make the adjustments and you're going to have to just plan. You, you, you got to plan your facility the right way. There's going to be kids that, that, there's a good chance that there's going to be certain places where kids just play water polo. There's kids that are just going to swim and you got to use, utilize your staff. You got to utilize, you know, your, your, your facility and it can work.
All right. So now as far as, as far as kind of some of those questions, we have, we have, we have, we have a couple of questions in the chat here. So one was, will the UIL have any influence on individual school districts to participate and make water polo successful as a newly inducted sport?
I, sorry, I totally missed it.
Will the UIL have any, yeah, have any influence on school districts to participate and make water polo successful as a newly inducted sport?
I mean, they're going to send out a survey to all the school districts that they, you know, it starts, step one is, does your school district have a, a pool? If your district doesn't have a pool, there's a good chance you're not going to play water polo. And, you know, that goes back to even the UIL vote. We were getting shut down by school districts that don't have, that don't have pools. They were voting against it. But if you had a pool, they were voting for it. So that, that's what we're looking at.
Right. So now there was a question.
As far as.
So, so yeah, so now there is going to be a specific question here. Is the, what, is the season moving to the fall or staying in the spring? The water polo season, yeah.
Go ahead.
Like, like the, like the spring high school season is going to continue for the 2020, 2021 school year as a spring sport. And then it's going to move to the fall, beginning fall 2021. That'll be the first official UIL season. That'll be the first official UIL season. And that'll be the official kind of like the high school season. And then the spring high school season that, then the, that will no longer exist. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, that's a hundred percent correct.
Perfect. And, and then there's a, then, I mean, so when will the season start and when will it end?
Well, they're finalizing details right now. Right now, the, like the, it would be the first Monday of August is when the season would start. They're looking at playing through August. You're going to, you would play your first game, well scrimmage, I guess you could say would be the first, you can play a scrimmage the first Saturday. And this is all speculation, mind you. Then by the next weekend, you can get into more tournament formats and play tournaments through August. And then probably into mid-September, you're, you're going to start seeing like district play. They're looking at a mid-October state tournament, which this is not the same as your Tisco State Tournament. The state tournament will be the four teams in the state. It's not going to be a 16-team state tournament like we have right now. So, and, and that's been a big hangup with people is like, oh, well, what about my swim team? They need to get started. By early October, you're going to have your, 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 your state tournament's going to be set. So most people are into their swim season at that point. If, if they haven't, I mean, and again, they're swimming every day. They're conditioning, they're training. But October, but majority of the teams will be done by early October.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's going to be some challenges with a little bit of overlap with swimming, starting in like, you know, September. But again, I think you mentioned it kind of earlier with some scheduling and, and some creative scheduling that, that can definitely be accomplished. And it's only going to be for about three, four weeks max of the six or seven month long swim season.
Yeah. I, I mean, there's going to have to be some crossover, but I mean, like I'm already kind of looking at my schedule. I'm going to, I'm going to mainly have my swimmers practice in the morning and I'm going to have water polo practice in the afternoon. And that's what I can think of now. I think you might even see where there's going to be schools that have classes for water polo. That was a big, me moving over to this new school, that was a big selling point of is, hey, do you want to have two classes of water polo a day and two classes of swimming? Yes, that sounds fantastic. So let's do that. So, so, you know, any, we'll just have to see how it lays out. Each school district's going to be different. Some schools have their campus pools. Some schools train four teams at one pool. You, you just, everybody's different.
Yeah. And I mean, I know I've talked to a bunch of athletic directors and coaches and such, and everybody has their own challenges. And everybody's kind of attacking these challenges a little bit differently as far as the number of coaches. Are, are they going to, are they going to hire an assistant coach? That's going to be the head water polo coach and the assistant swim coach. There are a lot of different challenges out there, but everybody that is currently playing water polo, I believe, is going to continue to play water polo. They just have to figure out exactly how they're going to do it. And then there's a ton of new teams that are, that are, that are lining up to play here in, in fall 2021. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be exciting for sure. But.
We were looking at, I was on a discussion with the UIL the other day and we talked quite a bit. And there, we're anticipating 200 teams, like that, that's our number to start.
And that's, so what about the non-UIL teams?
Are like private schools?
Yeah, like, like St. Agnes or a, or a homeschool or St. Mark's?
Well, unfortunately they're not going to be able to compete in UIL water polo. They're going to, we're, I, I know that there's works happening right now to start a parochial league for those teams. But I think it'll be just like basketball or anything else during the regular season. Those teams play, private schools play against, you know, regular high schools all the time. So they're going to have that opportunity.
And I believe that they're like, I, I, I think Scott just mentioned there are, there, yeah, there are people working to get some private and parochial school kind of championship going. So during that second half of the season, when everybody's doing the district games and leading into the playoffs, the private and parochial schools are going to continue with some tournaments and their own championship as well. So I believe everybody is, is trying to work to, to get as many opportunities to play as, as possible. So.
Absolutely.
Now, um, now I think you mentioned it earlier, but all the work that, that you're doing and Tisco Water Polo is doing with the UIL, the UIL is going to get out a packet to schools here in the fall about this is what water polo is and here's all the rules and such, correct?
Yeah. And honestly, we're a little bit behind right now. They've had to make some big decisions the last couple of weeks. I'm sure everybody's seen it. So it's, it's really, man, we are, you have, like, they get like 20-minute windows for conversations. So they're, they're, they're working real hard. The, the packet is almost complete. Excuse me. So that wasn't real. That was just a little, little cough. But, so, but we're, the packet is almost complete. I'm going to look at it before we just send it out to everyone and make sure and, and just we, we're on the same page with everything, basically.
Exactly. And, and the way it works for schools, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but schools are going to get the packet and they're going to talk amongst themselves and their, and their coaches, their swim coaches. And they may have already decided what they're going to do. And then all school districts will turn in the paperwork in December, January on, these are the sports that I'm going to be playing for the following school year. And water polo is now, and water polo is now going to be listed on that and they'll, and they'll be able to choose to play or not play.
Yes, they will be able to choose. And then, once that goes through, once all the teams submit, then they start putting together the districts. We have zero control, just like in swimming or any other sport. We don't know the district alignments. We don't see the district alignments until the UIL surprises everyone. So it's all kind of up in the air and it's dependent on people getting signed up and getting their information in, which is the responsibility of their superintendent or their, their athletic director.
And then, and then, and then the UIL will take everybody that says yes. And in fall, in, in February 2021, they're going to put together the districts, the regions, and then they'll send that out to everybody.
Correct.
And then I believe in the spring of, or of spring of 2021, everybody's then going to, is going to put together their kind of seasons and their schedules. And hopefully everybody has the schedule kind of, kind of going into the summer of 2021. And then you start a, like about August 1st in, in 2021. That's, that's the general timeline.
Yes. And I think it's going to, it's going to be a lot like, if you guys plan, like I start the day after the swim season is over, I start contacting people about dual meets. And I think it'd be something similar as far as your like regular season goes, your, or your tournaments that you want to enter. I, I, I think you just kind of, I would, I would say maybe even during the high school season for spring, you might be doing that planning to, to get ready to go. Cause it's going to happen pretty fast. I mean, I can't believe it's, it's, we're, we're getting close already.
So a couple of questions here in, in the chat. Have there been any discussions as far as playoff formats?
Playoff format, it's going to be similar to, I would say, like any other team sport in the UIL. You're going to play like, you, you play your district, get teams to seed a, what, the, the next round. So the next round would be, you know, like a bi-district game. Then you're getting into your regionals. And then basically those four regions will seed the final tournament, much like in basketball or football or any other sport that's in the UIL.
Good. And then, and then, I mean, yeah.
It won't be a giant tournament. Like everything that everybody's used to, it's different. There's going to be like going to a playoff basketball game where it's one team playing against one other team. You know, winner advances, loser's done. There is no going, there's no backdoor to third place to try to sneak into a tournament. They're, all that's gone.
And, but that's just going to make the region, like the region weekend a little bit more important. It's going to make the district weekend a little bit more important.
I, I mean, I, I think at the beginning, you're going to find that the state tournament, like I, I think the state tournament is going to get settled at the regional level. But I, I really believe that. And that happens in a lot of sports too. I mean, the, I think this year's five A state football, Foster versus Shadow Creek is probably the state championship game this year. And, you know, Shadow, Shadow Creek won and then ran over everybody else. So, you know, I, that the region level becomes very important. Your district games become very important.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
And a lot of those will be like on a Tuesday night or something. You won't see like most regional, like regional games or games to get into regional finals or any of that stuff. You, you won't see any of that happen. And like, it'll be a weeknight game. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a giant tournament.
Okay. So another question from the chat is, a school that is planning to play in the fall season? Any, any thoughts on a reasonable budget, you know, including officials, some equipment, suits, you know, caps? Yeah, to travel and entry fees?
I, that's going to be an interesting call. That, that's one of the, that's probably the toughest question on this whole thing is budget. I, for years have had to just find ways to get water polo equipment for my team. I've got four goals at my pool right now that I brought in from other places. I, we never paid for any of them. But the, I, I would say a reasonable budget, you got goals, each goal, you're going to roughly be about $3,000 for a pair of goals. For a set of game caps, you're looking at probably $1,500. Honestly, for my own personal team, I, I just have my kids buy their suits. I, I find that suits are something that I don't want to ask for them back because they've been wearing them. So I just make them buy them. And those run for boys, 45, girls, 75. And then you got to buy balls. So I would say 12 balls per gender, probably spending about $600 a year on balls.
Yeah. So I mean, and teams are going to have to figure out a code. So do we, do we want to travel out of town for kind of during the school year? Do we need to plan for the like, and, and budget for kind of playoff travel? Obviously there's going to be some tournaments still in the first half of the season as far as the entry fees for those. If you're going to be hosting a tournament, that might be a way to kind of still kind of raise some money. So, so it's, it's going to be what you're, it's going to be up to your school and kind of about, how much kind of do you want to do? Because again, even, and even within the whole format, there's going to be a team that's going to play 35 games. And then there's going to be like the other teams that only play about 20. So.
Yeah. And I, and I, I think they're going to put limits on the amount of games you can play. That's probably going to happen as far, there's like, there's limitations for baseball. They, they, you know, you have limitations for swimming. It's how many swim meets you can go to or how many you can go to in a week. And I, I think there will be a limit on games. We haven't panned that out yet. We're going to know a lot more in the next few weeks about, and once the, the manual comes out.
Okay. Will the UIL, and I don't know if this probably, yeah, if this has been brought up yet, but will the UIL allow teams to travel out of state? Okay. Will the U I L, and I don't know if this prob, yeah, yeah, if this has been, uh, brought up yet, but will the U I L allow teams to travel out of state?
That has not been brought up yet. Um, I, I do not know that answer. I don't know the answer to that question.
But that is, but that is definitely something that'll be asked, kinda moving forward for sure. So, um, is it going to, and then another question was, is it gonna use FINA rules or the NFHS rules?
If, uh, it'll be the NFHS rules.
Yeah, and for those, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And for those, yeah, for those that don't know, the FINA rules, which were like, that, like, that, like, that, like, the international rules were adopted by USA Water Polo at the beginning of this year. Then actually the NFHS rules, the high school rules, actually adopted the USA Water Polo's minus a couple things. They're not gonna do the flying subs and they're also not gonna do the 22nd reset. Um, and we're hoping that the NCAA rules are gonna adopt that as well. So hopefully in our country moving forward, it's gonna be one set of rules for all the, all the different levels. So it's, yes, so it's gonna be fun. So the NFH rules are gonna be almost the same as the, as, are gonna be pretty much the same as the FINA rules, so. Then, uh, another question here was, um, how will the U I L determine success for the inaugural season? Are there any metrics?
Uh, I think they're looking for a, a number of teams participating. I think that's how they're gonna see success. Uh, if they get good participation numbers, of course, this, our current state is not, I don't think it's helping us too much. Uh, but I, I think they're gonna look at participation numbers as the mark of success.
Yeah, and for a lot of, I mean, there are currently about 450-plus high school swim teams out there. So, um, I believe the, kind of the, like, the, like, the target number is anywhere between 150 to 200 teams for, for, uh, fall 2021. And if we can get to, to the 200 or the 225, that's still only about 50% of the number of high school swim teams. And then we just keep growing year after year after year after that. So.
Yeah, and I mean, just, and, and all it takes is a couple of teams a year. I mean, that's, and that's really how this TSCA Water Polo started is we were just adding a couple of teams here and there. Uh, sometimes we'd have a great year, sometimes we wouldn't. Uh, but it, it just, it just kinda snowballs as you go and then more and more people get involved.
Yeah, I mean, and there's gonna be, uh, like, like, again, I think we have 150-plus schools that are, that are playing now. And, and I think the majority of them are gonna keep playing and we have a ton of new, uh, school districts that are gonna be adding throughout the state as well. So I do think getting to that 150 to 200 number is gonna be something very, very doable, even in our current situation with the, we not, we don't know what's gonna be happening here in the, in the next couple of years, but there are a ton of people out there, just, yeah, just kinda, just kinda preaching the word of water polo. Um, are there any other questions, guys, for, uh, Coach Slay? And any suggestions for parents on how to encourage their district to opt in? Is reaching out to the U I L good or bad?
I don't think reaching out to the U I L is gonna solve anything. I think reaching out, like, you need to reach out to your own school district and show that there's people that wanna do this. Um, and I, I don't mean like go crazy on them, but you know, just show that there's interest and that people want their school to participate. And I, and I think once you talk to the right people, and that would be probably your athletic director, um, or nicely speak to the school board, um, that would be a, a good way to do it.
Okay, okay. And, and also just kinda, and just kinda focus on the reasons to play water polo. It's, yeah, it doesn't, um, it doesn't, it's, it's not a huge, yeah, expensive sport to start, especially if you already have access to swimming pools. Even, even a school that doesn't have their own pool, they are used to renting a pool for swimming. They can easily, uh, ki- kinda rent the pool for water polo for an extra month and a half. So it's definitely not that, it's not that expensive of a sport to start. And that's gonna be the big thing and that's gonna be the rub, it's just getting started. And, and to let everybody know, like, uh, like, the, like, the coaches have to be full-time employees of the school district. So that is, so that is definitely going to be, um, a big thing for the coaches out there or the teams adding. And we're gonna have a ton of, we already have a ton of education, um, kind of, kind of opportunities kind of out there. And it's just gonna grow and grow and grow as we get to the fall of 2021, so. Alright, so.
It's exciting. Uh, we, every day, I'm sure it's gonna get a little better and better out there and we can start pursuing this more. Um, but with the biggest thing that we need to get infrastructure in place more than anything, uh, we, uh, we, we need coaches, we need club coaches, we need referees, uh, we need all kinds of stuff uh, to, to build this thing and grow this thing. And, and coaching education, the more, the more that people are willing to participate and get out there and help coaches, the better.
Okay. So a question is, any schools in far west Texas about, have you heard about them playing? Like in El Paso and Midland, Odessa, so.
I've heard some El Paso talk, um, for sure. Uh, the, a lot of, uh, I'm sure you guys know, west Texas is very spread out. Um, and so they have some demographic issues. Um, so that's stuff to work through, but I, I do know, I, I've heard of El Paso participating, yes.
Okay, and, yeah, and that's good. And, and I've also heard of teams in, uh, the Midland and Odessa, uh, ki- kinda, like, kinda areas playing as well. So, um, I mean, everybody is still trying to figure it out. They're all waiting for the rules to come from the U I L to make that, to make that final determination. There are, there are people that are, that are talking about kinda, kinda starting the first, uh, kinda season or they might even wait to fall of 2022 as well. So now, there is a couple of questions as far as are high school coaches going to be able to coach their kids outside the high school season?
Uh, I would say no. And I, I, I can't speak to that yet, but I'm gonna say, go ahead and say no, that they're not gonna be allowed to. Um, the U I L rules that I know of is that you have to coach kids that are in sixth grade or less. Um, and so that, that's the, that's the ruling that I know of right now in other team sports. Um, and from my, I have a club team as well. Um, on my club team, I, I've pretty much made the shift this past year to where I'm coaching more of the younger age groups. Uh, I coach the sixth grade and under kids on our club team and not really the older kids at this point. So that, that's the move that we're making.
Okay, alright. What is offered as far as the education, uh, for coaches and officials?
Uh, well, as I, I had a big plan for the TSCA Water Polo Conference. Uh, hopefully I get to pull this off, uh, but at the fall TSCA Water Polo Conference this year, I have, hopefully this works out. Uh, I have Guy Baker scheduled to come. Uh, he is the former US National Team Women's Coach. He basically built the Women's National Team Program to the best program in the world. Um, and he, uh, I've known him for several years. Uh, he used to think I was a good coach or something. So he like tried to push me along in the pipeline. Um, so he found out I wasn't, I guess. But, uh, he, uh, he, he coached the Olympic team, I think, pretty sure, three Olympics. Um, so he's gonna be, and he is really good at just breaking down the sport and just individual skills to be successful. Um, and he will be giving a, and he's giving two days worth of speeches at the TSCA Conference. Um, hopefully, if we have it. Um, so that's on the agenda. Uh, TX Water Polo has tons of podcasts. They have a giant education, txwaterpolo.com. I, I use it, okay? So the education section, um, it, there's a ton of stuff on there that you can dive into. And, and I mean, you could be looking at it for days. There's video. You can click on the US Water Polo, uh, national team, like, their national team program, like, what you need to do, the skills and drills are on that page. And, and with video links to the, to the drills.
Yeah, and we also have the Texas Coach to Coaches, which is a, which is of some professional development that, that we started in, yeah, in April. Um, we've had a ton of coaches from around the state that are doing, um, just a presentation on a single water polo subject. Um, I think Scott's done one. We have Jeff, yeah, yeah, we have Jeff Chandler ki- kinda doing one this upcoming Thursday. We've had coach from Chris Cohen up in, up in North Texas, coaches from all over the state. Those have also been all recorded and all the different documents have also been placed at the txwaterpolo.com kinda website. It's under Coaches to Coaches. So it's the same place that the town hall meetings are, are, are also posted. So, but there is a huge e- education site there and we're also planning, and it's everything that's on hold right now to do a ton of in-person clinics throughout the entire state between now and fall 2021. So as opposed to the coaches kinda having to go out to the clinics, we're gonna bring the coaches to, or the clinicians to the coaches. So, um, and I mean, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's one of those things where, yes, we're gonna have a lot of new coaches. Yeah, yes, we're gonna have a lot of coaches that may not know a, a whole lot about the sport. They may be ba, like, uh, they may be baseball coaches or assistant swim coaches. We're gonna give everybody as much opportunity to learn and grow and learn about the sport, yeah, before the fall 2021 season, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I hope that answers the question.
The more you can learn, the more you can learn, the better. There's gonna be, uh, I mean, there's gonna be opportunities for people to get out there. And, uh, talking to an athletic director a couple of weeks ago, i- i- he thinks that, you know, people are gonna learn how to do this. Uh, co- coaches that are good coaches at whatever sport they coach, they're gonna be good at this. And they just have to put in the time and effort and, and motivate kids.
And if there's one thing that this, that COVID-19, there is a ton of information out there. There's a ton of professional development kinda opportunities. Please, coaches, we have links on the txwaterpolo.com website. Again, there's a ton of information there. Please go there and just, yeah, and just kinda dig through. There's a ton of very good kinda, i- i- like, kinda info. And we keep adding to it and adding to it and adding to it. And it's just to become a lot more robust as we go. So somebody asked here, yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, go, go, go.
No, just, no, but somebody asked here, will tag stay in the spring? Do you want me to answer this one?
Uh, tag, US Water Polo tags?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, I would, I'll answer it. I think yes.
Actually, so, um, I believe this upcoming, we're actually gonna have tags. Tags, for those that don't know, is the Texas Age Group State Water Polo Championships. It's an eighth grader, sixth grader, and fourth grader and under championship. It normally happens during the same high, like, kinda during the high school season, um, to coincide with the, the high school season. So for this upcoming fall, we will have a tax for ninth grade and seventh grade and fifth grade and under to make up for the lost one this past spring. Alright, and then we'll have another tags in the spring of 2021 for the 14, like, for the eighth grade and the sixth grade and the fourth grade and under kids. And then we're gonna have another tags in fall of 2021, also for eighth grade, sixth grade and fourth grade. But then starting in spring of 2022, we're gonna have a spring tax. So there'll be two tax tournaments each year. Fall tax and a spring tax. And the spring tax is gonna be age group, the 14s and 12s and 10s. The, and then the fall is gonna be the grade in school, so it'll be slightly different. So, there you go. I hope that makes sense for those that asked about tags. That is a US of Water Polo question, so.
That was a lot of tags information.
There you go. Any other, um, is there any other questions out there, guys? I appreciate everybody taking the time to come. Please, if you have any more questions, please either just go ahead and unmute yourself and ask or ask in the chat. Um, I think, I think there's one question here. How will the movement of coaches to new high schools affect existing club teams?
Uh, well, that, I, I mean, I think anytime a coach moves to a different high school, it's gonna affect the club team, especially the kids that were at that high school. Um, hopefully it doesn't affect club teams that much anymore because high school kid, coaches aren't supposed to be coaching those kids anyways. So, uh, it, I, it shouldn't really impact them.
Yeah, and then we have a lot of very good coaches out there, so spreading them out a, a little bit is not gonna be a bad thing, so. And, I mean, and, and for the, and like, if you get a coach that goes to a school district kinda like yourself and you have to help with, oh, like, a, a, a lot of other kinda quote-unquote new coaches at the other schools, that's, that's what it's gonna be about. There's gonna be a lot of coaches helping coaches and programs helping programs, especially that first fall 2021, that fall 2022, so.
Yeah, it's a, it, it's gonna be a big undertaking. I, I, and I can't, I think the more you can get ahead now, the better. Uh, and the more you can help out other coaches in your district, the better. Uh, and I mean, encourage kids, like, go, go join clubs while they're young, get started, get to playing. And then by the time they're in high school, they'll have a U I L water polo league to play in and it's pretty, it's exciting times.
It is exciting times cuz it wasn't that long ago where kids weren't starting high school or they weren't starting water polo till they were freshmen in high school. So now you have kids that are playing whenever they're seven, eight years old, which is great. So.
Yeah, that's, uh, how the sport's gonna grow.
That's right. So Scott, thank you so much. Are there any more questions for Scott? Hey, this is, this is the great experiment. We are, um, kinda moving forward to fall, kinda 2021. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Scott, thank you so much for coming on here and answering all the questions. Um, if you have any more questions, please, please feel free to contact Scott directly or email me at jolnhand@usawaterpol.org. Thank you so much. Yeah, just, yeah, just everyone.